So we'll get started with this public caucus. Tonight, we have with us Matt Dominus, who's the Finance Director for the city, Jim Hunt, who's the Director of Government Relations for Burkheimer Tax Innovations, who's the city's Collector for the Payroll Preparation Tax, and Assistant, First Assistant City Solicitor, Andrew Cotillo. Just to give us an update on how the payroll preparation tax is performing to date and what some initiatives we have going forward. So the floor is yours.
How's that? Could you hear me now? Closer? There you go. Okay, I can hear now. I just want to give a quick background, really brief. I know some members of council weren't here during all this and maybe some in the public. But the Payroll Prep Tax was an initiative that came out of the Act 47 process. Act 47 provided municipalities that were in Act 47 the opportunity to levy a payroll prep tax. There was some conditions. One, you had to be an Act 47 municipality. The other one was if you levied a municipality in Act 47 levied a payroll prep tax, they could not levy at the same time a business privilege and mercantile tax, so they had to forego that. And the third condition was that if the payroll prep tax was levied, that it would have to be revenue mutual. It would have to be, the collection would have to be based on the prior year's preceding years' business privilege and mercantile tax collections. Some of the reasons that was entertaining for the payroll prep tax was that it was more equitable, with a broader tax base under the business privilege tax. Manufacturers and insurers and some other entities were not subject to the business privilege and mercantile tax. Collections would be more efficient based on data that Burkheimer, who is also the Lackawanna County Commission or Committee, Earned Income Tax Collection collects the city's earned income tax, so they do have a database based off of earned income tax that is complementary to the payroll prep tax. Another benefit would be that it enables the city to receive revenue for services done by non-city businesses who do work in the city, because it's, payroll prep taxes levied on entities that do, are conducting business in the city. And a fourth one will be really outside of its four quarterly returns similar to the earned income tax. The business privilege and mercantile tax was due on April 15th, so this helps spread out the cash flow on a cash flow basis similar to earned income tax for the city. City Council adopted the payroll prep tax in December of last year, right before the city got out of Act 47 in January of 2022, and subsequently appointed Burkheimer Tax Innovations. And the payroll prep tax became effective on January 1st, 2022. So that's a brief background, and I'm going to turn it over to Jim Hunt, who will go more into detail into the implementation and the data on collections today.
Great. Thank you for having me this evening. Year-to-date, the city, we have distributed $654,446.81 in payroll preparation tax. That amount is made up of $5,741.65 that has actually been distributed to the city. There is $8,848.13 that is awaiting distribution, which are payments that have been processed but are awaiting release to the city. We also have, in our possession, $1,115.10 in payments that have been received but have not been posted to the year and quarter that they're attributed to. And the city has paid $11,470.66 in commissions and $7,271.27 in postage, in addition to the commission that we charge. So that makes up the $654,446 that has been collected year-to-date. Second chart actually is a breakdown of the quarterly collections. First quarter of 2022, we've collected $343,911.66. Second quarter, which was due August 31st, $297,180.82. We've received some early payments for the third quarter, which will be due October 30th of this year. It's due at the end of the month, so we are starting to get some of those payments in. Of 12,070, November 30th, yeah, I apologize. November 30th. So they are all the payments. And we did, we oversee year-to-date a small amount of fourth quarter payments, $161.69. All its fourth quarter payments are made up mostly from businesses, self-employed individuals who quarterly returns would be rather small, so they simply estimated what they would be due to pay for the year and paid it all upfront. And then they will be required to reconcile that with us in March of next year, along with the rest of the businesses that are on file. When we started the implementation of this tax, we worked very closely with the city to establish the tax rules. The tax rules are based on the earned income tax records of the employers that are reporting for EIT here in the city, as well as lists that were provided to us by the city, including rental properties and current business purge tax files that we took and compared against our EIT records. Those two, those files were all combined into the starting file for the city's payroll preparation tax, which amounted to 8,500 potential PPT clients. We did, at that time, mail out returns, letters of induction to each of those in May of this year. And during that same time, we worked with the city and the city solicitor's office to formulate the frequently asked questions that would help to explain the tax and detail exactly what was taxable and what was not based upon your ordinance. That information is posted not only on our website, but the city's website. The city has links directly to our site where the businesses can find the frequently asked questions, copies of the quarterly returns that are due, as well as the exemption and exemption and payment under protest forms that were developed in conjunction with the city finance department and the solicitor's office. So the first return, as I stated, were mailed out late May, so they went out a little later than we would have preferred, because the due date for the first quarter was May 30th. So city council did approve in May a 30-day extension of that duty, which gave businesses the opportunity to pay without penalty and interest through June 30th of the year of 2022. And that extension was reported not only on the city website, on our webpage, payroll preparation tax page, as well as in the news outlets here in the city. City also produced a press release in June of 2022, reminding the businesses here in the city that they had a liability to file by June 30th of the first quarter payroll preparation tax return. And then they also published a second press release in August of 2022, reminding taxpayers that the second quarter due date was fast approaching. That was, that due date was August 30th of 2022. In August of this year, we did send out notices to all the businesses that had not filed a first quarter return with us by that time. They did help to generate some additional payments, and it continues to help generate some additional payments. But those failure to file notices did notify the businesses that they were accruing interest and penalty from the due date of that return, which was June 30th, and encouraging them to file the missing payments for that first quarter. Since the due date for the second quarter passed on August 30th, we will be sending the second quarter failure to file notices to the businesses on file that have not filed for a return with us for that quarter. They will be going out early next week. So we're encouraged that based upon the results of the first quarter mailing, that this second mailing will help encourage more businesses to file. We did see a number of businesses when they filed their second quarter, that filed their first quarter along with those. So there was a positive effect with those failure to file notices. And we'll continue to send those out on a quarterly basis, 30 days after the close of the quarter, to keep the payroll preparation tax filing requirements firmly in front of the businesses that are subject to the tax. Our customer care department is continuing to field phone calls from businesses here in the city with questions regarding the payroll preparation tax and tax liability for that tax. And, you know, besides the answers that we can provide them, we are encouraging them to review other information that is available on our website in regards to the tax. And we have been meeting since late May on a weekly basis to review collections and to determine how best to proceed to continue to educate the businesses here in the city of their liability. The city is also, on a monthly basis, providing us copies of the information regarding all the permits that are issued. That information's being checked against your PPT database, and those contractors are being added at that time and being sent the registration form, letter of induction, and the quarterly returns for all of 2022, so they are aware of the filing requirements. And the city has also met on two separate, in person on two separate occasions with the Scranton School Board to further educate them on the payroll preparation tax, so they were, so they were up to speed if they were to decide to come onboard in January of 2023 with that tax, if they do so. The returns will be amended to show the new combined tax rate. And, you know, letters of induction explaining further that the tax is now being levied by the city and the school district would be sent to all the businesses. We did offer and hold a virtual education seminar for businesses here in the city that took place earlier today. We did have a number of businesses that logged on and participated in that event. I feel it was beneficial to have that information out there, and it was recorded and will be posted on the city website for review by those that could not attend. So far, of the 8,500 businesses that we added, we have closed 2,500 of those accounts from the initial mailing due to them informing us, providing information showing that they were non-taxable. A large percentage of those non-taxable businesses are rental properties that file Schedule E, where Schedule E income for rentals is considered to be passive, which would mean it is not earned income, so would not be subject to your payroll preparation tax, where in many cases, those nonprofits were taxable, or actually grocery receipts were taxable to, for business purge tax filing. So many of those individuals are still filing with the city, I'm sorry, the school district for their business purge tax, but have no liability for the current payroll preparation tax.
Jim, the Schedule E, you said that they're renters? They're not renters, they actually own rental?
They're owners of rental property.
Okay, so they own rental properties, but they don't have any employees?
They have no employees, and they're not taking an active participation within the operation of the rental property. Most individuals that file Schedule E have rental properties that, the sole purpose of that property is to maintain and pay for the upkeep and the cost of acquiring that property. They're not into business of actually renting property for profit in many cases.
So they don't have employees, but how, so in terms of the upkeep for those properties?
The upkeep for those properties in most cases is done by the homeowner or the hiring outside help to, you know, do the maintenance on those properties. They may also utilize a management company to oversee those properties. Those individuals who are renting properties as a form of business would be filing Schedule C, which in Schedule C, those net profits would be taxable for your payroll preparation tax. And before, in closing, those businesses, each of those?
I have a quick question. So you're referring to C as someone who would have a property manager?
Would be a property manager, or?
Who oversees three prop, three properties for someone who lives, say, in Jersey.
Well, those in Jersey, or he could live here in the city and owns an apartment complex or, you know, a whole block of properties.
Right, but I'm just focusing on the property manager as that employee.
For the most part, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So in order for those businesses to be closed, they were required to provide us with a copy of their Schedule E from 2021, showing that that is, was the basis of their rental income. A currently still over 6,600 accounts remain active on file. And of that number, as of today, 1,253 have made a payroll preparation tax payment to date. They remain to have yet to be filed a quarterly return, and they will be the individuals that will be receiving that second quarterly failure to file notice. We expect that there will be some additional businesses that will be closed based upon that, that simply have not responded previously due to being either nonprofit or being rental properties, or in many cases, finding that they, those individuals have sold the property that was originally provided to us as part of that original list.
So Jim, that's about 19% have actually paid the PPT tax that should be paying it?
Correct. I honestly believe that that number has inflated, because the current earned income tax rolls are closer to 2,800 accounts, not 6,000. So I do believe there's a number of accounts that are still on that, on that PPT file that are, just will not be subject to the tax. But there are a number that we've added that are contractors that would not be filing for earned income tax purposes, but they do, are required to file for payroll preparation tax for work done here in the city, so.
So with that being said, you're still identifying taxable entities?
We're still identifying taxable entities based upon the permits that we're receiving, and we're also identifying non-taxable entities based upon the information that they're supplying to us with the failure to file notices, responses that we're getting in.
Could I touch on that for a second? So I'm going back to number 13. So, so this takes in consideration for, I see, you know, this is definitely the people that are pulling the permits and license contractors in the city. But I remember in the past, being on the school district, that we had to hire a company to go after businesses' contractors that came in and did large jobs and never, you know, were accountable for the taxes they should have paid. And then they left, and we'd have to hire a firm to track them down and get the monies back. So when I look at this, are they included in that process for number 13? Or is that just something totally separate?
No, they're included in that.
So they're identified, like, say someone comes in and builds a Wawa, you know what I mean? Or, you know, when I was growing up, it was the kids are us, they're not around anymore, or toys are us, but, but they would leave. They'd build millions, you know, multimillion dollar buildings and then leave and then not pay anything, and they'd have to be, you know, chased down.
So these, these individuals that Mr. McAndrew is talking about were people that were avoiding the business privilege, mercantile tax, maybe an out-of-town contracting company that came in to build that Wawa and built it and left before even? And these companies here identified those businesses that did business here in the city and then went after them for failed payment of those taxes?
We started, we came up with, to provide them with this, this information that was to get people, so this active list will keep going for that type of situation, so we can identify people who are coming in here who are not in our original 8,500. This way, we can pinpoint the ones, and Jim compares this against their active list to see if they're on there. But that was one of the proactive points that we did to try and keep this active list so it continues to grow for that type of situation.
So the city, there were two contractors with that. One, the district had one, and the city, I think, had Turnkey. Did they turn their information over to us when they left?
I don't know. I don't know. When the list was formed, I don't know, it'll have to be days.
All right. I was trying to find the budget number.
For that, I don't think the business privilege or mercantile would play into what's out here. I think it's, the better data, I think, is using the data that Burkheimer has in terms of the EIT, correct?
Yes. Most of the rate that the city has, this is 2787 rate, was mostly based off of earned income tax information that Burkheimer had.
That is correct. Yeah. That's why I think about this number here, anything over, you mentioned a lot of them are, are the 25, that are closing those Schedule E's. The number that's, or the rate is actually based mostly on their income tax, so they have more confidence, I think, more collection efficiency, is that type of information, being able to see who that was who submitted their income tax, so they don't have to pay for it. You know, so it's kind of more, we need to cross-check.
So how are you formally ruling out the other businesses that perhaps are not active anymore or haven't responded and said that they're not appropriate for this type of tax?
They're being ruled out in one of three ways. Return mail, if it comes back as being undeliverable, we're closing the accounts, we're not going to, we're doing research to see if the account is still, still active in Google, through Google search. If it is not, then we're closing the account, so we're not, you know, sending out forms and costing the city postage, as well as time and getting that information back is undeliverable. We're closing accounts based upon information that the businesses required to provide to us, such as the Schedule E, or in the case of a nonprofit, they are required to provide us with a copy of their Pennsylvania entity of not, sorry, non-charitable entity certification, which the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue provides. And then we're also closing businesses, I'm sorry, the three, the reasons. And the nonprofit, you know, the nonprofit Schedule E and return mail that we see. And while we did get the original list, that did come from the city, and it was my understanding that that list had been assembled based upon the prior contractor who had identified those properties as rental properties, and as well as the business purge tax records that had been supplied by the single tax office to the solicitor's office. All those records were compiled and then, you know, cross-referenced it so that each account would already be added once. In fact, with the rental properties, you know, we pared that down based upon name and mailing address, so in some cases, the same individual is on there six or seven times. So instead of having six accounts for that individual, they have one, and we sent that information. We have identified, based upon earned income tax payments, that there are 1,200 businesses that filed and paid EIT in the first quarter of 2022 that did not file for payroll preparation tax purposes. So they will be part of that second quarter failure to file mailing.
Before we move any further, what's the, what was the number that the city budgeted for revenue?
The city, the city budgeted, wow, 1,842,000. And for the three quarters, that's about 614,000 per quarter that we're anticipating.
Yeah, that was the number I had offhand. Okay, thanks.
And we've also identified the top 100 of those 1,200 accounts, based upon the earned income tax that they reported in the first quarter. And we're confident if the majority of those businesses were to file and catch up with their payments, you would be at your $600,000 figure per quarter. So, you know, the results that we've gotten from the initial failure to file notice are encouraging, so we're hopeful that the second mailing to those, many of the same individuals will encourage them to file and catch up at that point. And the first quarter collections do continue to grow. We are, as I stated, we are meeting on a weekly basis. I do provide an update by quarter to the solicitor's office and finance on those numbers, and the school district is also participating in those phone calls as well, as time permits. And ultimately, because we are the earned income tax collector, once this first year process is completed, the fourth quarter returns will be due March 2nd of 2023. We will have the information from the earned income tax payments that these employers have made to pursue them through delinquent collections. And one of the major benefits of the payroll preparation tax versus your prior business purge tax, with the business purge tax, you didn't know what a business's grocery receipts were. We know what the earned income tax wages were. So when we pursue them, we will, you know, be prepared to be able to take them all the way through to the civil complaint process as necessary, knowing the exact dollar amount that is due at that point. It will then be their responsibility to prove that they do not have that liability. And if they do not, they cannot prove that, then that would be the tax that is owed for 2022 to the city for your payroll preparation tax. And that same process, failure to file notices, year-end reconciliations will continue to take place for as long as we are the city's administrator.
Jim, what about, I'm sorry, what about like sole proprietors or disregarded entities? You know, they have no payroll and no employees. Should they have to pay the PPT?
The payroll preparation tax for a sole proprietor, their payroll is considered to be the net profits that they generate from the operation of their business here in the city. So they would be required to pay on, on those net profits for the payroll preparation tax as well.
So what happens if they pay on it, and then at the end of the year, you know, they have a loss?
At the end of the year, they would have the right to file reconciliation showing that they had a net loss instead of a net profit, and either request a refund or ask that that payment be credited to the coming year and utilized to offset their liabilities in 2023.
And would that apply to partnerships too? Like if they don't have employees and therefore have no payroll?
That is correct. They would be taxable on the net profits of the partnership. And the portion that each, you know, if the partnership is not paying it in full for all the partners, each of the partners would be individually responsible for the portion of the net profits that were attributed to them.
Thank you.
And again, too, I just, you know, it's called the payroll prep tax, but payroll is a kind of, under the statute, under our ordinance, is a very particular technical definition of the word payroll with a capital P, so it's all helpful to think of it in different terms than just the kind of lowercase p payroll, and that's why some of the?
That sounds like it's an earned income tax, and I think they already pay an earned income tax, don't they?
The, I'm sorry?
It sounds like what I described, like an individual, individual who has no employees and therefore has no payroll. Is it fair to say that they, they pay an earned income tax if they live in the city?
Yes, they, well, aren't they, they're getting taxed on the same profit?
All right, so they're paying earned income tax, and now on top of it, they're paying a payroll preparation tax, even though they don't really have a payroll?
Yes, the way that the?
Double taxing people.
The way that the enactment, the state enactment was written, as well as your ordinance, that is, that is the case, correct.
And again, I think it's more helpful to think of it as a separate definition, separate tax, you know, in the same way that, you know, a homeowner might pay a real estate tax and an earned income tax, because they are making money and they own a home. And it's, these are kind of different pieces that come into it. So just in terms of, you know, it gets technical in the language, but that's, that's a helpful way to kind of think about what payroll means for these purposes. It's a little broader definition than we might generally consider it.
And just to add to that, technically, those individuals who are sole proprietors here in the city were paying the business purge tax based upon their grocery receipts. So in many cases, they could add $100,000 to the grocery receipts, owed the business purge tax on that full amount. Their net profits now may be $15,000 a year. Their net profits now may be $15,000 a year, they're paying the payroll preparation tax on the $15,000 versus the $100,000 that they were subjected for the business privilege tax. So, you know, in many cases, those individuals, sole proprietors are, you know, having a smaller tax liability for the second tax, the payroll preparation, than they had for the business purge on the prior legislation.
Wouldn't you think you will have a better handle on, like I said before, it appears as though 19% has been collected. Now, you're indicating that of that 6,600 total accounts that remain open or active, you're guessing that maybe 2,800 will actually end up owing, you think that?
Well, based upon the EIT filings for the first quarter, the actual employers physically located here in the city are about 2,800. Then you also need to factor in the fact that, you know, the contractors are coming in to do work within the city are part of that 6,600 active account number. They should be filing either for the quarter that they're operating, they came in and did that work, or for multiple quarters that they were in the city and operating. So if you have a large construction project going on, the contract, the general contractor and all subcontractors would be subject to the payroll preparation tax.
So I wasn't here when this legislation was passed, but right now, we're at 654,446.81. What was the expected collections?
1.6 million was.
1.6 million.
1.8, I'm sorry, 1.8 was, what was budgeted for the first year.
And that's, and just to clarify that, that's only for an estimated three quarters of collections, because you needed that one full year to go into these collection deadlines.
So it's 1.8?
Because in the first year, you only collect three, three quarters.
Right.
Whereas then, once you get into the second year, that's when you get the full collection of four full quarters.
So is the 1.8 representative of three quarters, or is it?
Yes.
It's three quarters, yes.
So it seems like we have.
We have a ways to go.
Yeah, we have collectability, and then we have like the identification. So you have 19% of the identified entities have paid. It seems like we're at about 35% collection. We're going into the second year, and in the second year, we have to adjust our rate, correct? So do we have enough information to go on with this first year to adjust that rate going into year two?
To answer your question, it's the first full year of collections. So the first full year will end next year on the 28th of February, which is the last fourth quarter for 2022. Then it will be evaluated for the following year, what the rate would be based on those collections.
So the first full year ends February of '23?
Yes, the first full year is, I think, in the legislations of collections.
And just to clarify too, so what we're looking at is, you know, we have, because only two quarters deadlines have passed so far, so we have what's collected for two quarters. So kind of in terms of where we are at, as terms of where we were budgeted to be at this point in time, we're a little closer to 50%, a little over 50% maybe. And again, the rest of that, and I think, Councilmember, you identified it right, is it's questions of collectability and identification, and so we certainly have been robust in our identification efforts and kind of notification efforts, and we've been seeing that that is yielding collections. And the kind of collectability of this is clear, and I think, you know, Jim did a good job of kind of explaining how at the end of this process, you know, we know who these folks are who are doing business in the city of Scranton, and we're able to, you know, follow up with them even if they kind of don't file after their first, second, third, or fourth quarter. And so it is, the universe is still known and is all there, the collectible universe, and we're confident that even if we kind of, you know, get this top 100 that we're talking about, that that will bring us up to kind of 100% of where we expected to be at this point, so.
And what was the collectability rate of the BPM? Was it 86?
I don't remember what that would be. I don't like.
Like, yeah, there's really no way of.
Need to speak into them like.
There's really no way, that, I think that was a problem with the business privilege and Merck, was there was no way of, you know, putting a solid number on what was actually owed. There was a lot of, you know, backwards that really needed to go into determining what that number really is, and we just didn't have the resources to do that, correct?
Right, and I think, I think there was attempts by the city and the school district to do that, to try and identify. I think that was part of what Turnkey was supposed to be, to do.
Yes.
And that never really panned out, and it's really a self-reporting tax, kind of like with this is too, but as I mentioned in the previous, is like, with the benefits of this or of our business privilege is that through the earned income tax, we know who's paying earned income tax and has payroll. So that's one of the, I get, one of the benefits of the business privilege is being able to know, as Andrew mentioned, we know who they are. We couldn't have said that about the business privilege Merck tax. It was deeper to get into and it was harder to identify those, but now we have a better idea of that. And like I said, that was the basis of the, the rate too, was mostly the earned income tax.
So if the school board had already approved the change for, for the district to change over to this form of tax as well, would that have affected, like the bottom line, the number that we're seeing now?
Well, there might be some confusion that, you know, because there is two different taxes now, and if it was, you know, probably in the best worlds, maybe if they both are doing it at the same time, it's hard to predict, you know, as trying to foresee something, that it's hard. But I think there is some validity in what you're saying, I do. Some of that Andrew picked up, I think the business privilege Merck licenses go out and still have City of Scranton School District on it. So we identified that to take that off, so, but yeah, I think you're right.
And I think, I do think that's a fair point, because I believe the tag, the single tax office did get, did receive full payments for both, you know, what businesses were expecting to pay to both entities in terms of the school district and the city and their business privilege of Merck, and then they had to distinguish which one was the city and then refund that payment because that tax isn't levied anymore.
We have updated the second quarter failure to file notice to include reference to that, that although you may have paid the school district's business merge tax, you still have a liability for the city's payroll preparation tax there, you know, two separate levies.
Yeah, we did update that letter too, to put, if you, it's the second quarter failure to file a notice, but we put that language in there about the business privilege and the school district, that you still have a city obligation, but also if you have not paid any prior payroll prep to make your filings along with them. And as Jim mentioned, with the second quarter, they've seen a lot of combined first and second quarter payments coming in from entities.
So that notification was in May, right? If I'm looking at this correctly, or has it been something more recent?
Well, the first failure to file notice went out in mid-August.
Okay. Yeah, the first notification was a broad one to 8500 to let them know that this is a new tax. And this is a new tax, and, you know, it's going to be due, well, it was May 31st, but extended to June 30th. That was the initial, like, here's the new tax, and then the one that went out in August was the failure to file, fail to file for people who didn't make that first quarter, and that's the one that's going out next week for the second quarter.
I get that it's probably still confusion, they need some more education and awareness. I just wish, looking back, that this was phased in over a couple of years like Pittsburgh did. I think, I think there would have been less confusion, I think that's the way it should have been done. I made mention of it, Jesus, five years ago, but it's unfortunate we didn't take that route.
Yeah, they would have needed legislation by the state level to do that, because they had it in the state level for Pittsburgh for that.
You don't ask, you don't, you don't get.
Yeah, but you're right, though, that is, I think that's a primary to do this.
So that is my overview of the processes that we've undertaken along with the city to get the businesses here in the city educated on their requirements to file, as well as to continue to pursue those that have failed to do so to date, so.
I think that this type of form is really helpful to get that message out, and I appreciate you having us here for this too.
And of those three quarters that we have here, that makes up that 1,253 entities?
That's correct.
And you're saying there's another, then there's another 1,200 that you feel you've identified on top of that?
Correct.
That will be getting that second fail, fail to file notice?
Yes, that is correct, yes.
Yeah, you said, if I'm correct, Jim, about probably about 5,400 failure to file notices?
Approximately.
Yeah, because that includes the EIT and plus the ones from the original ones who haven't received anything. So they're pretty mass mailings, like, these are direct mailings, these are going right to the entities, you know, in May, in August, and again in October here. So it's, it's, and it's an education, but this is coming in the mailboxes too.
So moving forward, going back to, you know, those that file under Schedule E are exempt, but those that file under Schedule C, it is considered taxable?
That is correct.
Is there a possibility that, you know, I could file under Schedule E this year, but then file under the Schedule C for next year?
Only, only if you changed the way that you were operating. If you were to acquire more properties and then actually begin to manage them yourself, you would go from Schedule E to Schedule C. And those type of changes would be also found through the earned income tax filings of those individuals.
Okay.
We will be looking at self-employed individuals that file as city residents with the 2022 filing, to identify those that had Schedule C, to verify that they are also on for payroll preparation tax purposes.
Okay, because that's what I was getting at, is how do we, you know, make sure that they're not flying under the radar, just getting that exemption just once, but then changing the way they file?
Sorry, at the end of the day, it is a self-reported tax that, you know, the taxpayer is, has the responsibility to pay, so certainly, you know, those are the, those are good questions, and certainly what we're trying to, you know, focus on in implementation. But at the end of the day, even if someone slips through the cracks, it's still their responsibility to pay, and so that's, and we can always go back.
And it's also easier for the city to identify, you know, those who haven't paid, correct?
Yep, exactly.
Penalties and interest do accrue from the quarterly too, so the people who are missing the first and second quarters are accruing penalties and interest on this too, you know, so there, it's not at the end of the fourth quarter that they're going to get the penalties and interest, they're actually accruing that right now for the ones that have missed first and second quarter.
So as we go through these weekly updates too, would you be able to keep council informed on the progress there? So as we move into, you know, because since we're moving into budget season, just making sure that we are, you know, having that growth that we're expecting?
Sure.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
So it does say that you've closed over 2,500 accounts from the initial mailing, and right now there's 6,600 that are still active. What was the initial number that we had?
The initial mailing was around, it was 8,500. Of the initial mailing, 2,500 have been closed, but there's additional accounts that have been added, are from those reviews of those, the permits that are being provided to us by the city on a regular basis.
And do you feel we're still going to see some of those fall off as non-taxable of the 6,600?
Well, of the 6,600, yes, I do feel we will see a number of those fall off as being non-taxable.
Do you have a beat on how many you think?
I would not want to, you know, proffer a guess, but I do feel it's a fair number.
I didn't know if there was like a percentage, maybe, that we're looking at a similar percentage as that first 2,500?
If I had it based upon the earned income tax records, employers are actually filing and a number of contractors that we've added, I, it could be as high as 3,000 of those 6,600 accounts could still end up being closed as not being taxable. But that's just a guess at this point.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
No.
Thank you for coming in, very informative.
Thank you for the time.
We'll take two minutes before we start our regularly scheduled meeting.